Call the meeting to order and do the pledge of allegiance and have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands. Indivisible, infinite, endless, for all.
Okay, Terry, do you want to do the roll call, please?
Frost?
Here.
Helma?
Yes.
Bailey?
Here.
Dolan?
Present.
Sardi?
Here.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion. Go ahead.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Frost, supported by Helma. All in favor?
Aye.
Both same side. We don't have any presentations, no public hearing. Call to the public on non-agenda items.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda 8B, 1, 2, and 3, to include bill totals of $54,939.08.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Dolan, supported by Helma. Terry, do you want to do a roll call, please?
Helma?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Sardi?
Yes.
Frost?
Yes.
Okay, next is unfinished business discussion regarding the special event application cost recovery. I guess I'm going to start out. Because I read the memo that Joe sent out or included in the packet, and I think probably back in the, whenever that was written, back in the 50s or whatever.
The charter.
I probably think that the village had the money and they thought it would be a nice gesture to do that, but the fact is that this year we took $77,000 out of our fund balance to balance our budget. We're losing money monthly by not doing anything with that building next door, which has been a real sore point with me. Even if we rented it for $1,000 a month, which would give us $12,000 a year, which you do that over 12 years, and it's been over 12 years that we've owned that building, that turns out to be roughly two hundred and, little over $260,000 a year that we'd be making on that. And probably, or the 12 years, and then probably it's worth more than that. We probably could get, if you even double it, to $2,000 a month, which is roughly almost $700,000 that we could have earned. If we didn't have streets to fix, parking lots to fix, downtown to fix, tree grates to fix, all the other things that we keep putting off and not doing downtown, they haven't, hasn't been maintained at all hardly. We've got sidewalks to fix. We got a lot of issues that need to be taken care of, and I just do not feel like we can spend $30,000 on parades for, or whatever events. It's unfortunate because I think that the parades are popular with people, but I think that the taxpayers in the village would prefer to have their streets and sidewalks and parking lots and everything else fixed. If we had everything up and going right, then I would see no problem with it, but I just feel like that's wrong for us to be paying for parades and police, DPW, fire department, who else did I forget? And I think that we need to use, be using that money for something else. That's my opinion.
Madam President?
Yeah.
My opinion on the topic still stands. I think the community promotional activities are obviously an integral part of municipal government and esprit de corps for the community, and they're significant. However, I take community promotional activities to be more of a literal sense. Considering the vacancies which we have in the village, I would like to see the funds that are allocated under this section to be utilized for promotional activities for the community. I think basic needs and must haves always come prior to celebratory events, which I view parades as being as such. We have a responsibility to the taxpayers and the residents to provide the best services and community available, and celebratory events, in my opinion, are the function of nonprofits, volunteer efforts and things of the such. So it would be my preference to implement, as previously discussed, the recovery efforts. We have a responsibility to the community to recover all costs, in my opinion.
Joe?
Madam President, I'm curious why this has come up again, considering that, and there's not a date on here, so maybe Mr. Medor can.
I apologize for the minutes. I think that was in May.
Yeah, so in May, we adopted the policy procedure and application for implementation and set aside the, oh, I see, never mind. I thought we had made it effective January 1st of 2019 for the cost recovery.
That wasn't my impression.
My recollection was that it was to set the policy in place and discuss the recovery at a future date in time.
Okay.
I think it was parsed at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
And it was something that Ed Drew looked forward months ago. He put this on as a, with the question mark next to it as it appearing, approaching the year end, and I asked him, well, that was kind of penciled in. Do you want to have it on the agenda? And he thought, well, let's have it on, just to have, bring up for discussion and.
Thank you.
Revisit.
Bill? Could you come to the podium?
I'll be next. Hi, Ma, I'm Mr. Lawrence. I totally agree with Sue. I was on the DDA five or 10 years ago when I became the chairman. At that time, we were spending $50,000 to be event planners. That's not the DDA's charter. Soon after that, the DDA agreed at the same time, we shouldn't be spending that money for event planning. We should be promoting businesses and doing whatever. Soon we did away with it. It's a good thing, because a couple of years later, we ran out of money, had to be bailed out by the village. The DDA went broke. Spent money that shouldn't be spent. I warned them, I'm, I'm a great seer at the time, but I warned them, what are you guys doing? You don't have any money. The same thing with this. If you have to dig into your fund balance to balance your books, that's a shame. You've got, you've got to redo your priorities. You know, you can't be event planners. You've got to give the basic needs. I live in one of probably the better streets, and it needs to be fixed, Dennison. I've got a giant catch base, and you know, when you go through it, you better be wearing a sports bra, because I mean, you're literally thrown about. If you guys want to, you know, use that money for event planning, shame on you. I just think it's a total waste. I always have and I always will.
Thanks, Bill. Ma?
I hardly think having our police department direct traffic during a parade is event planning, but I'll go back. I think there are certain times when a community needs a parade. It's morale. It honors your veterans. It honors, I'm not saying we need to have a parade, and I'm not saying the parade has to be three miles long, but I don't think asking our staff to direct traffic, to clean up before and after a parade is going to cost us $30,000. It doesn't mean we have to have a parade every month, but I think.
Oh, that's it, no parades! We got to balance the budget!
We're no longer a community. If we don't have a parade, we're no longer a community. Let's just close the windows, turn out the lights, and go away.
Joe?
Madam President, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Medor. Is there an accounting of what events have cost the village thus far?
The only one that I provided for was like two or three meetings ago, what had to do with the Lone Ranger event. And it was right around $5,000 if you.
Are there other events that, that cost the village funds? Homecoming parade, Memorial Day parade, Christmas parade, et cetera?
The Memorial Day parade, there was, it was kind of out the gate and didn't, before this policy took place, so we didn't really track the cost on that per se. I know it was much less. The Lone Ranger, of course, would be the largest one, because the DPW actually works on it in the preceding week and everything, so their hours were allocated towards that. The upcoming Chamber Parade, which they just received their application today, because they sent it to Chief and Chief and Don this afternoon, probably after they were gone. They haven't seen it yet. Much smaller scale, might only be a non-duty officer or a couple of folks, so much smaller in scale than the Lone Ranger one, for sure.
Okay.
And the part, the second page of that was something that I had reminded, I recalled seeing something in the charter when I was kind of reading through it about promotions and stuff, and so I just went back and revisited and printed it off just for your information. It wasn't a recommendation or anything else, it was just more of, some might not even know that that even exists in the charter, so that's why I printed it out.
One of the prob, one of the problems that I see is that everybody is wanting us to pay for their insurance rider, because we require that now, and our insurance will not pay for it. So by the time you add up all those for all the events that take place, I don't think, like again I say, I don't think the taxpayers want us spending that money. I don't mind spending it on trying to fill the buildings or advertising, stuff like that, but I don't think that we need to pick up the insurance rider for every event that goes on in the village, and you let one, and they're all going to want it. It's not fair to do one and not offer the same thing for everybody.
Just for clarification, we have been refusing to do that, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
The Lone Ranger, and I did receive just the Chambers rider of insurance with their application today as well.
And this is not saying that we are spending this amount, but it gives the, gives us the authority to spend that amount. So it still takes an action from this council to make that happen.
Yeah.
Okay. So what's council's pleasure? What do you want to do?
Now, Madam President, this, this topic continues to come up, and while I'm not in disagreement with what Councilmember Frost just suggested, that there is no mandate that we spend that fund, I do believe it's important to ensure, as on the agenda, that we do recover the costs of the village. And I think you can have two things at once. I believe we can function and promote the needs of a nonprofit event such as a parade, and I do think they're essential for a small community. But I do think we have a responsibility to implement the best practices of other communities by recovering our costs. As a result, I would make a motion to implement the previously suggested language for the cost recovery as presented to council when we initially debated this matter.
I'll support, for sake of discussion. I, I think that before we make such a motion, and I agree with Mr. Dolan, I would like to see that, that policy again, because it's been some time since we've seen it. It needs to be fresh in our minds. This is going back to May, you know, so let's, let's, I would be in favor of setting it aside and, and bringing it back with that language front and center.
So are you changing your motion?
The motion stands.
Okay, are you changing your support?
Yes.
Okay, I'll support.
So we have a motion without, oh, oh, you're supporting it now?
I'll support it.
Okay.
Okay, Terry, do you want to do a roll call, please?
Sure. Dolan?
Yes.
Bailey?
No.
Helma?
No.
Frost?
No.
Sardi?
Yes, or no. Yes, I want yes. I don't want to set it aside.
I think it comes by votes.
I don't want to set it aside.
And I agree with Joe. If you bring more information in the next meeting, I'd like to reread it.
I don't recall if we had a full and blown policy at that point. It was just more of a discussion of, should we get cost recovery? I could resend out the information in regards to the one event that we didn't have tracking on, because that was the largest by far.
Madam President?
Mm-hmm.
Do you need a motion to set aside?
Yep.
So moved?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion, it's set aside by Frost, supported by Helma.
Yeah, comment. Since we just voted on it, I, I think it should be called a set aside. I don't know what the correct word is. I'm, I'm willing to do the equivalent of set aside.
Sure.
But I don't think that's the right word. Reconsider, perhaps, is that, reconsider a better word?
I believe there would be a new motion to set aside. It is separate for the same topic.
That means we're going to bring it back at another meeting as opposed to tabling it.
At the end of the meeting.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Table, it's not the right word.
Right.
Yeah, well, I'm not going to make big deal about my saying that that's not exactly the right word.
Sometimes you set it aside, you say it's set aside until.
I see.
Eric?
Just for the topic of discussion, my recollection, in having looked at it about a month ago, I do believe it is only a skeleton concept surrounded by supporting information at the time that we would recover costs. My opinion is that there were no specific details, there was no attached policy that had been constructed, and in concept, I believe that regardless of any accompanying policy, we have an obligation to record, recover, correction, the costs. So I don't, with that in mind, I don't think there was any additional information but a concept to recover cost. I agree.
Yeah. And today was just a discussion on there, it wasn't an action item per se. So we weren't looking.
Okay, so we have a motion and a support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same side.
In light of the defeated motion.
No.
Okay, so we will, we will reconsider.
The next new business resolution. Bill?
I'm not going to interrupt the review at all, but I do want to take time to thank you and your family for your service to the community. I'm not sure when your last meeting is. It's got to be coming up pretty close, and I did not want to be without thanking you and your family.
Thanks, Bill.
Here, here.
Thank you. Okay, new business resolution for the 1819 tax overpayments.
I actually think this is actually in place, but if no one has any questions, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-19.
Support.
Yeah, I have a question about it. What is, what do we presently do? Do we give a credit on the next tax round?
No, we send a check.
We just, we just swallow it?
Yeah, if someone overpays, right, it's, it's different if they overpaid underwater bill, then we would just maybe put a dollar of credit if they did it wrong, stuff on their water bill, because it's going to recur again next month. Taxes are much different, and, you know, I wasn't aware of a, a policy or a resolution in the past being adopted for it, so, again, it was just a practice that by the time we go through and deposit and do a check and send it back to them, if we get it early enough, we did send one or two back to the folks, because they had weeks, we'd send it back and say, please send the correct amount.
I see.
But again, it's a process, we have to make deposits, we have to cut a check, you know, sometimes for just a pennies or a dollar or two.
Yeah, if you had asked me what the policy was before I saw this paperwork, I would have said, well, somebody overpays a few dollars, then they just have a credit showing for next year's tax, but apparently that's not what we do now.
Yeah, that would fall into a different fiscal year, then you've got the books, and then we're, we're, we had to keep track of it. It's just better if they paid and we, and we didn't have to cut a check back or keep track of the credit.
I see.
Okay, we have a motion by Helma, supported by Frost. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Next is the one-drop brewing.
This is something that came, you know, the Planning Commission is considering it right now. The brewing on the I-1 zoned property down there off Oakdale, it's older industrial buildings that were built in 97 and 2003. It's a, a use that's permitted by right to do the brewing operation there. The only reason that the Planning Commission for a special land use is because they're looking to do a tasting room inside the brewery, and that's going to be before the Planning Commission. It already has at one time, it's been pushed off to the next meeting. But all of that is a moot point if they don't get the approval from the Liquor Control Commission, and then they need to get permission or a recommendation from this body that for to recommend or deny, not recommend, the approval of that license at the Liquor Control. So if you see at page two, page one just talks about the breweries and some of the things they can do with that license, the microbrew. Page two is the local government approval form that the state liquor department licensing regulatory affairs actually puts out. And if you see right above the vote part, about two-thirds way down, it talks right by the binder there, it says, "It is consensus of this body that it either recommends or does not recommend the application be considered for approval by the Liquor Control Commission." So that's why it comes to this board for either recommend or does not recommend that it be approved.
I have a minor change to recommend for this document here.
This is a state document, so I don't know if we can change it, but.
This one, this one has it filled in as Oxford Village. There is no municipality named Oxford Village. This is the Village of Oxford, and I would like it to be spelled that way.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So, so with the Village of Oxford Council versus.
Oxford Village does not exist in, in the state of Michigan.
Right, so the meeting of the.
A Village of Oxford.
Council.
Yes, thank you.
There you go. We can change our part.
Did we fill the application out? Or did they fill?
I, I filled this out, because this is what, the only thing that we do.
Maybe want to put a Y after microbrewer.
I think that's what they called the license.
Yeah, it looks like that's how it's spelled out in the previous document.
They're a brewer, a microbrewer.
Okay.
It's a microbrewer license.
Madam President?
Eric?
Oh, yeah, there it is.
After the grammatical corrections on the state Liquor Control Commission form, I move to endorse the local government approval for One Drop Brewing Company, LLC at 13, I'm sorry, 130 Oakdale Street, Oxford, Michigan 48371.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by.
Three supports.
Dolan, supported by Frost. All in favor?
Aye.
Both same side. Okay, request for Oxford Lions to use the back building for their food drive.
In your packet, you'll see the, the letter that Mr. Gerard, Gerard asked about the newspaper sales, and then it just opted into, or spun into something else. Obviously, the newspaper sales, nobody else is using the corner at that time. The only conflict would be then on the Saturday, if the parade is going on, that they'll have some overlap. He'll be selling papers during the parade, perhaps.
No, no, we always stop before the parade.
Okay, I mean, that would be the only conflict I could see. But at the same time, he also mentioned about doing, using the back building again this year. He says in the past, they have worked it out where they worked around the, the Chamber people. I did mention to him that the council had already approved the middle school robotics team to use it till mid-October, till mid-December, so there may be that group in there at the same time, and he seems to think that that's fine, that they would work it out between them. And so that would be like the third group then, and it would be ending up mid-December or towards the end of.
December 13th.
13th, there you go. So that's why I brought it, bring it to the council, because of the use of the back building.
I can review the process for you if you like, so.
Adapted council.
It won't take long.
Yep, go ahead, Charlie.
What we do is we get canned, the processed food contributions from the middle school, and we have three businesses in the township that donate, that gather canned food, you know, boxes of cereal and that stuff. And we get all that together, and what we've been doing is using the police garage to store it and sort it, and then prep it for, for our, put it in boxes for the family units that are going to get the contributions, you know. And then we distribute it on the 13th. And this year it's 13th, it's every year, it's roughly in the middle of December. And the reason we've been doing that is because it's, it's heated, you know, and our food freeze. So, and what we can, we do is we set up our tables, and we can set them up wherever is practical for the situation, and just stay out of everybody's way. And we can put our, we've, we've been doing it, we haven't had any problems, we've been doing it for years, and we really appreciate the use of the building for that. So we're flexible in where we can set up.
How much space do you usually use? How much space do you usually require?
Probably, like, if you put the doorway right, right here, where that ledge is right there, to the wall, and then it would be, that would be the most we would do.
So it leaves a lot of space for other uses.
Oh, yeah. We can set up against the wall, we can put them on right, the tables at right angles, whatever works. But the idea being that you put, you put all the food, and then you can sort it, and then you start packaging it, you have to have a place to put the boxes of food that are sorted, you know? So that's why it takes a fair, fair amount of space, but we can, we can, we're flexible. And the other thing is that we wanted to see if it's an issue or not, was what we've been doing is checking with the building manager for, when we do our paper sale, we, it's like three days, from like 8:00 to 2:00, and then it's a Thursday, and then 8:00 to 2:00 on Friday, and then 8:00 to 1:00 on Saturday of the parade, and we just needed like an office space. Could be in here, could be in the community room, over there where Parks and Rec used to be, just someplace where we can set up, get our coffee pot, get our papers in there, just set up for, for going out to the street back. You know, so I, I think, maybe I can work that out with Joe. We've talked about it. I don't know if that's something the village has to approve or not, the council.
I checked with the DDA, because they have the sweet, Super Sweet Stroll the night before, on that Friday night, and then the Chamber, because they have their parade that Saturday. Neither of them need any space in that community room, so we could probably work it out there like they did in the spring when they're doing the white cane sale.
Yeah, same sort of thing. Again, it's a little bit slow down.
Joe?
Madam President, would it be more comfortable for you to, to do the sorting of the food stuff in the community room or the former park space?
Well, we've been able to do it, and we haven't had any problems with it out there. And that way, if it's coming and going, we're not, you use those rooms for different things.
Sure.
And this way, we won't be in your way.
I see.
That's why it works out for us.
Okay. Okay, council's pleasure.
Is somebody keeping track of what the building being used for?
That's the third event that'll probably wrap up for, you know, December.
But they're not going to be in one of the other group's ways?
Oh, no.
I mean.
I'm not. And for discussion purposes, this is a topic, I think, that's come up at three consecutive meetings now. We've somewhat given mixed signals on whether we want to adopt the recommendation to limit access for safety and security reasons, whether we want to forego that. I think in order to maintain consistency, and I, there's obviously no question that there's a need and that the cause is exceptional, but I think we need to maintain some level of consistency and use of the village municipal property for various other reasons, while it's taken place in the past. I'm going to maintain opposition and some consistency with that.
Well, we'll be in there at the same time as the kids are playing with the robots, so you're going to have, I mean, you know, at least, at least that frame, that timeframe will be roughly the same. You know what I'm saying?
I do.
So we've already approved them in there, and this way, we would be in there in the same timeframe, so.
I just want to speak on his behalf. We've talked over the years of utilizing that garage for their purpose, which, which I think is a great idea for a good cause. I think Joe and I discussed, because of all the use in the, in the garage, I think after December, we were going to make that our cutoff point as far as not utilizing the garage for any services after. utilizing the garage for any services after that, because of the plans on for that garage in the future. So I think after, after this can drive in mid-December, after these guys are done, and after the robotics team is done, and with AA already being gone, I think, I think what Joe and I discussed, I think that's a good idea and a good plan for us, just to, after that, that's when we cut off our resources for that use. Is that a good business? We can. And I'd recommend too, if it's okay, that the use of, since AA is not utilizing that space there, that they can utilize that as well, because they're not going to, with the robotics team out there, they can utilize that space where the AA was having their meetings in there as well for their can drive, so they have that for that as well.
And what I can do, what we can do is when it comes time to start doing this, we can review our setup with you, and then listen.
Thank you. So it's council's pleasure.
I'll make a motion to approve the use of the former fire hall for the Oxford Lions, Lions Club newspaper and can drive.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Helma, supported by Frost. All in favor?
Aye.
All same side?
Aye.
All right, Charlie, you're all set.
Good, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, next is the CDBG application.
Well, it's that time again to get, with the county and getting it squared away. Like I said in my note there, Terry went to the mandatory meeting at the workshop that the county had a couple weeks ago, and one of the things they emphasized was that the applications are due Friday, December fourteenth, and so we wanted to be sure and schedule our public hearing as soon as possible after the meeting, which was just last week. So we were going to propose that we do it at the first meeting in November, to try to get it out there for the required public hearing and the needs and wants hearings for the CDBG funds. She provided some other information on the funding. Those are estimated amounts. I don't think they've got the final amounts yet, but that's what they estimate. And then page two in the packet there talks about eligible projects. And then the map is there too. So the part on the east side of twenty-four, from, you know, north to south, there's a lot of areas, perhaps, on the backside of the buildings we can deal with. You know, there's a lot of things we can do. We're in here to discuss and talk about them tonight, but we will schedule that public hearing if you guys agree with that being a good date. And then that would give us, you know, a month or so to get the application put into the county. And Terry had the resolution in there as well about posting it and publishing it, so to speak, to begin November first. That would give us ten days notice.
Madam President, with no additional comments or questions, I move to approve Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty, Resolution to Publish Community Development Block Grant. Public hearing date notice.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Dolan, supported by Helma. All in favor?
Aye.
All same side? Okay.
Don't we also need a motion, I need to make a motion to schedule the public hearing for the CDBG program for November thirteenth?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Helma, supported by Frost. All in favor?
Aye.
All same side? Okay, Danny, have any items removed? Public comment? Okay. Okay, Mike, do you have anything?
I have a community chief soul again. The fire department had mentioned that they're going to do a boot drive of weekend of October twenty-seventh through twenty-eighth, so I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that.
Fill the boot? Stop with the arrow? All of them both?
Danny, do you have anything?
I'm Bradley, Public Works Superintendent. I believe this is Ms. Bizzardi's last council raid or consummating, and I just want to say thank you, Sue, for all your committed hours to this community and the support of your Public Works Department. And we appreciate you, and we're going to miss you, and just want to say thank you.
Thanks, Danny. Terry, do you have anything? No, I don't think so. Joe?
Just a few things. Revised the group doing the new website. It's going to be here tomorrow to do some training with me and Glenn. That was kind of already scheduled. We have a scheduled of certain things to just, over the next month or so, to get it, hopefully, our still goal is to get it live by the first of the year. Everything transferred over. Row Engineering was here and walked Burdick Street with Don and one of their engineer guys, Mike Carpenter, walked the whole Burdick Street project for nineteen, looked at all the catch basins and stuff. We're putting together a plan to share with council about the lane usage, how we want to work the three lanes out front, where we want to split it and turn it to a left turn lane and such. Pontiac is a left turn lane that we want to consider in westbound. So I asked Doug to try to put together something that I can maybe bring to council and using Glenn's projector, maybe throw it up there at the next meeting, just get some feedback from you guys, to understand where we're at on it and what we're trying to do there. The M24 project, I know we went down there a few weeks ago. There's a new project manager. He's looking, I think I mentioned it before, looking to set up a public meeting at one of the Oxford schools. I hooked him up with the school folks. I think it was somebody else he talked to just recently about trying to set up and reach, do some outreach. He's a little overwhelmed, I think, right now, stepping into the project in the stage that it was in, but he's trying. Mr. Harrison is his name. The special event has been turned in for the application for the Christmas parade. I received it today. Of course, that wasn't in time to put on the agenda, but it will be on the next agenda. Everything is complete, the application, the signed waiver, the insurance certificate, everything was all done today, and the map and everything. I forwarded it off to everyone else, like I stated earlier. The Planning Commission's special meeting is scheduled for October thirtieth at seven. It'll be posted soon. I'm trying to get it up on the website tomorrow as well. That was better than pushing it off a week later, because that was the election night, which there wasn't going to be one. We didn't want to wait too long. It's related to the One Drop Brewing, as we discussed earlier. You see Casa Real is doing some work on the back on the building. They're also doing some work in the front, and Dan Durham was in, he talked to, I think, talked to Chief Solow and Chief Schultz both about they were going to park one of the trailers around front as they do some of the work on front. They called this afternoon and told us they would be putting it out there in the morning, just to give us a heads up. We asked that they not be there for any long term or over the weekend, a couple days at the most. I think they, after Dan went back and visited with them, they probably will just put it there for the day and move it to the back lot afterwards. Their tensions are, I think, now not to leave it there overnight. Mr. Wackel's property, he came in and he has some issues with the bank, looking at the deeds and stuff for the properties as they go along Burdick and Mill Street down there. Ten years ago or so, there was a widening project or straightening project, something went on down there. There was some surveys that were redone to realign the properties to match up with the new lining of the roadway, but appears that those were never registered at the county. So I have Row, who actually wrote the letter from two thousand and eight, I forwarded it to Doug. He's looking into that to see what do we need to do. There was a couple steps that he proposed back then, happened to correct the alignments of the new parcels, the parcel IDs, so they would match the new road, roadway lines. So we're working on that. Doug's, I just sent it to him yesterday. I was just aware of it yesterday. Hopefully, we can keep that moving along, so not pose any delays for Mr. Wackel. Davison versus Oxford. I hear it's Friday night, so my hometown versus this hometown, so I'm torn. I may be there, I may not. It might not be, you know, good territory, but I am curious to see the blue turf. So I'll have to see that maybe. The other thing is, Sue, from what I gather, this is your last meeting, from what I read in the charter and such, and I sincerely want to say thank you for helping me land here, and your confidence in me and your help along the way, and I very much appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, council comments. Dave?
Well, I hope that Sue will continue to be involved. I can't imagine the Village of Oxford without Sue. That's about all I've got for today.
Thanks, Dave. Mal?
I think this would be sad if we didn't all know the truth. What we're really doing is turning her loose on the community. She will no longer be, have the constraints of being on council. She'll be sitting out there, free to say whatever she wants, and we're all in trouble. So I'm just saying, Sue, better than devil you know. Good luck, and I'm sure I'll see the Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday.
Oh, yeah.
So it's not your last meeting?
No.
Yes, it's the last council meeting.
Well, she's not in the planning, she's just going to be sitting out there. It's going to be worse.
Joe?
I want to echo the sentiments and thanks of my fellow council members and staff, and you're one of the reasons I landed here as well. When we were looking to come back to Michigan, and I applied for the DDA position, so I thank you for all of your support in me, and thank you for all that you do for the community. And in fact, at that job interview, you may recall, I said that I would support Oxford in everything, except for when they play Davison. However, considering that I have two Wildcats coming up, you know, at DA and through the schools there, I will have to say that I will put away my maroon and gold for Friday, and I'll wear my Oxford Dad hat, so...
Thanks, Joe. Eric?
Sue, your name is synonymous with the Village of Oxford, and over the last two and a half years, I have been honored to have spent many, and I mean many, hours of discussion on the telephone with you. I appreciate your guidance and your direction, your insight, and your love for the community, and it has been an honor to help push through some agendas and initiatives that have really, in my opinion, made Oxford a better place, and made it a much more sound community financially. And I thank you for everything that you've given this community. You're going to be sorely missed. It wouldn't surprise me one bit to see you back. But for the moment, when you take a brief hiatus, I just want to say thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mike would like to say something?
Mike?
Yeah.
You just couldn't just say that?
Listen, I didn't know this was Sue's last meeting. I guess I should have put two and two together, but I wanted to say, Sue and I, I mean, we go way back from the beginning, and your commitment to this town, to this police department is just, nobody can touch that. And I love you. We love you, and I know we'll see you around. Thank you for everything, Sue.
You're welcome.
Well, let's make her cry.
I know. Well, I am initially, because as most of you know, I was in an auto accident last week, and I want to publicly thank some people. The first one I want to thank is Deputy, and I think his name was Schur, is that his name? He was first on the scene, and he, I was so upset, and he crawled in the back of my car after it flipped over and stayed with me until the fire department got there, and you have no idea how comforting it was to have him hold my hand and just kept talking to me. And he stayed with me through that whole thing until they got ready to get me out. And I just, I wish I could talk to him, because I just can't tell you how comforting that was to have him be there and stay there. Obviously, the Oxford Police Department, I didn't see Paula there, but I saw Dave Churchill, and he was very helpful to me and comforting also. The police were there. I can't say enough too about the fire department. I know that we have a top-notch fire department, and seeing the new stretchers in action was not how I planned to do it, obviously. But those guys are wonderful, and I was frightened throughout the whole thing, but those guys, again, talked to me, led me through the whole thing, told me exactly what they were doing all the time, and I want to call out one special person, BJ. I said BJ too, so I'm assuming Pete knows who he is. He rode, he was with me, and he rode in the ambulance and to the hospital and everything, and he just, again, made me feel very comfortable. And all of that is so reassuring when you're going through a situation like this. I guess I always knew, but you don't know until you really experience it. I also want to throw out a thank you to my family, who have been there through the whole thing, and my friends and everybody, and I want to shout out to Nicole Marie, who has also checked with me through that whole thing. So thank you, all you guys, for doing that. I was going to come prepared with a big speech tonight, but I decided just to say thank you. I love this community, and I wear my heart on the sleeve about it. And I wish you guys all the best of luck coming up. Please don't screw up my community, and thank you for all your support and help that I have gotten through this last year, last several years. Some of you have only been here for a year, but Terry, welcome, because I know that we kind of dumped on you, and I appreciate your diligence in getting us through this financial mess that we've been left in for several years, and being honest and forthright with council about it, and particularly sticking with it and trying to get it fixed. I appreciate that. You have no idea how much. And Joe, I leave you with the village. I'm very proud to think that you're here, and I think that we've got a good guy. You've done not everything on the job list that you had to do, however. Budget-wise, you've gone above and beyond in some of the other things, and I appreciate your diligence to the, to the village and trying to fix everything. I appreciate you.
Appreciate you. Thanks.
And that's it. And so I'll ask for a...
Make a motion to adjourn at seven seventeen. Would you like to say the whole thing, because it's the last one, Sue?
Who supported that?
I think...
Okay, we have a motion by Helma, supported by Dolan. All in favor?
Aye.
All same side?